I think we're ready to go at 7:03. Let's call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of April 28, 2021. Please call the roll.
Chairperson Mateo.
I am here.
Commissioner Henigan.
Here.
Commissioner Marhul.
Here.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
And we have a quorum. Attorney Morris, do you have something for us about the governor's orders? They're being electronically?
I do. Just to refresh everybody as to why this meeting is being held electronically, due to the ongoing public health emergency consistent with the governor's most recent emergency declaration and some of his various executive orders, as well as recent amendments made to the Open Meetings Act. President Sells has determined that in-person meetings are not practical or prudent at this time, and therefore, this meeting is being conducted electronically. Just a reminder to everyone that all votes must be via roll call, no voice votes. And if anyone has any trouble hearing at any time, please use the chat or otherwise try to get Courtney's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting minutes from February 24, 2021? I move to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion or edits? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Matthews.
Hi.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Aye.
Commissioner May.
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul.
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan.
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Aye. That also, that motion also carries, passes. Do we have any visitors who would like to speak at this point? Okay, not hearing any. Trustee Pollock, do you have any update for us from the village board?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to the public hearing, PZ 21-01 regarding 201 Millbridge. This is a public hearing, I'm switching to my PDF, to discuss a variation sought from the following section of the Riverside zoning ordinance, Section 10-3, sorry, 10-7-3A6.E concerning accessory structures in residential districts, which states that the combined maximum ground floor area of all detached accessory structures shall be a maximum of 12% of the lot area to a maximum size of 800 square feet. The petitioners seek this variation to rebuild a non-conforming garage of the same size as the previous garage, which was 991 square feet on the existing foundation. The petitioners are with us, they are Janine and Don Blom. Please call the roll to open up the public hearing.
Commissioner Henigan.
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo.
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Aye.
Commissioner May.
Aye.
So we didn't lose any commissioners in the last five minutes. A published, a public notice was published in the landmark on April 7, 2021, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Those of you who plan to give testimony regarding this public hearing, if you're able to, please stand and raise your right hand. A little awkward on video, I understand. Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kashima, will you give us the village summary, please?
Yes, and just a quick introduction for those I haven't met, I am Courtney Kashima. I own an urban planning firm called Muse Community Design, and I'm the interim community development director. I'm happy to be working with you all.
Sorry about that, I had that right here to go over and I completely ignored it, my apologies.
It doesn't fit neatly into the agenda. So yes, we received this request and you see all the supporting materials in your packet. Chairperson Mateo reviewed the request, the 800 square feet versus the existing 991 square feet. So see, there's two aspects to take a look at, one is the square footage, the other is the impervious surface coverage. I will say, we received one piece of correspondence, so if it's appropriate now, I could read that into the record. So we received an email from Carolyn McNally. She says, "I have no objection to the variation of Don and Janine Blom, 209 Millbridge to rebuild their garage," and she lists her address as 228 Millbridge Road.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Blom, do you have anything prepared or anything unprepared that you would like to say to us at this time?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Mateo. If we, if we could, we'd like to take just about two minutes and give a summary of our situation and why we're asking for this variance. So, we are longtime Riverside residents, so we've lived in Riverside for 27 years, as of last month, most of that time being on Selborn Road at our home there. It was about, oh, it was in the fall, we decided to look for a home with more garage space. Don happens to be an automobile enthusiast and had recently completed the restoration of his 1936 Chevy and some other vehicles, and we needed a place to store them safely. So, we started looking, and of course, we wanted to stay in Riverside, so we were just delighted to find the home at 209 Millbridge for sale when we were, when we were looking. It had adequate garage space for all of our needs and, you know, some other amenities we liked as well. So, we purchased the home on October 26. We moved in on December 9 after replacing the old furnace and doing some other upkeep. And then, about 10 weeks later, February 22, thank you, after three weeks of very heavy snow, the garage collapsed and it crushed all of our vehicles. So, we are in the process now of getting our vehicles back in working order, and we want to restore our garage to its original size and to restore the value to the, to the property that we, that we put into it. And also to utilize the existing concrete floor of the garage. So, yeah, Don, do you have anything else to say?
Yes, I would just say that this garage, to me, was the perfect solution to difficulties I've been having. I'm retired and I have been working on this old car for many years and just made a big push to get it restored and just got it pristine condition, original everything. And I have several motorcycles, antique motorcycles that I've been working on, one of which was in the garage and some of my damage, and we're working to fix all of those up. But this garage has space for our personal cars, and then half of it we were using for the antique stuff with adequate space for storing different old parts, tools, and different memorabilia that I've collected over the years to go with everything, and the space was just perfect.
So, the garage was a big attraction for us when we were looking for a home. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions for the petitioners?
From what you wrote, Mr. and Mrs. Blom, the size that you're proposing is virtually identical to what was crushed by the snow?
Yes, identical.
And the style would be exactly the same as well.
And that's what the proposed drawings look like, it's designed, that the proposal is designed to mimic the original as well.
Yes. Our contractor is actually here, but he's not on video or, and he's muted. So, if there's any questions for him, I suppose he'd have to be sworn in as well, but he is here.
And Courtney, from what I can tell from the plaid of survey, the setbacks on the garage are all within more than adequate for planning and zone, for our zoning regulations? Because it's at a minimum six feet off the property line?
Correct, three feet is the requirement, and the garage slab exceeds that.
Right.
I have a question. Can anyone explain to me what would be entailed in, I guess the foundations of the existing garage are what they are, and if it had to be shrunk, sort of practically, what would be the impact? You said something about destroying the concrete floor, could maybe your contractor can explain? Would the entire thing have to be destroyed, or would just part of it have to be destroyed? New footings put in with a new wall? It'd be...
My understanding is that it would need to be removed and replaced, but Dave, if you can, if you can unmute, could you answer that question?
And if we could swear amen first?
Hello, good evening, this is David from Blue Sky Builders. I don't know if you can see me or not.
Your video's not on.
Let me try to, hold on. I'm new to Zoom, I don't, I don't really do Zooming. But let me try. Video, there we go, all right.
Start video.
There we go.
Great. If you wouldn't mind, sir, sir, if you wouldn't mind first, stand if you're able, raise your right hand to be sworn in. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Please continue.
Um. Unfortunately, there is no good way to reduce the size of the foundation. In theory, it could be saw cut out, and the existing floor area could be underpinned with new footings. But, that's very challenging to do. How do you pour cement under an existing floor? It can be done, but at that point, the cost of doing so is really no different than ripping out the whole thing and starting over. Additionally, by making it smaller, that's not going to bring the resident back to where they were prior to the collapse.
I have an additional question if I can ask, Mr. Kresak. The existing, what is the state of the existing foundation? And if you were to rebuild, would you have to do any additional repair or bolstering or anything like that to the existing foundation?
Well, according to the neighboring property owner, that garage was not that old. And Mr. and Mrs. Blom informed me that their neighbor told them that garage was erected in 2000. At that time, the Village of Riverside, as well as the overwhelming majority of the suburbs, did require a small footing under the floor to support the weight of the building. And that's still current codes on garages. So, the floor does have some very minor settling cracks, but nothing major, none of them are displaced, separated, or heaved more than a quarter of an inch, which is pretty much the criteria used by most communities when evaluating an existing floor.
I, I, and it, you probably haven't applied for the building permit yet, that probably comes later. But if there were any, like I said, repairs, I don't know what the right word is, to the foundation, what's the kinds of things that you think you would expect to get back from the building department?
Well, because the cracks are hairline settling cracks, there's really no good fix to those other than grinding them and patching them with epoxy, which is unsightly. It doesn't really achieve any structural difference in the floor itself. I've been doing this 31 years now for three different builders, and I've looked at thousands of insurance claims in my career, including fire investigations with State Farm, numerous collapses like this, and vehicle impacts, hit and runs, whatever. That floor is usable in the majority of the suburbs. It's really going to be on the Village of Riverside to determine if that 21-year-old built...
How would they change, to know 5?
You guys adopted a new zoning regulation and reduced the size...
Oh, regarding just the size, the square footage, okay, I got it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Mr. Kresak, I think if I'm interpreting correctly, the barring any zoning issues, the foundation is usable to put a new garage on top of?
In my opinion, yes. I'm not a licensed structural engineer, I'm just a contractor, but I could, I could use that floor in the majority of the suburbs, yes.
Okay. That, that's more where I was going at, I was not looking for a SC seal on that. Thank you.
Ms. Kashima, do you know if anybody from the village has gone out there to look at it?
I don't know. And it appears that the garage, the proposed garage square footage is less than the 12% of the lot area?
Yes.
I had a question for the property owners. One of the issues is that the total impervious surface on the lot is, would be 56% if you replaced it, but from what I can tell from the overhead picture, there's some kind of a patio or something like that, or some kind of a paved area outside of the garage. Would you be willing to shrink that at all, to get it down to a 50% impervious surface?
Certainly.
Yes. I'm sorry, could you, I didn't hear your answer.
Oh, yes, we would be willing to accommodate whatever impervious surface was required.
Do we have, does the village, Ms. Kashima, have any idea of what the size of that, what looks to me like a concrete pad is with that, if that was shrunken, would that get that 6%?
Yeah, I'd have to do some quick, quick math, and just to, there's different ways to achieve that rate, and they're not all equal, but there's the driveway, and then there's the patio. So I could, I could do some quick math, but I think if the, if that becomes part of the recommendation here, staff could work with the applicant to achieve the goal.
Okay, as necessary, basically, to shrink it as necessary to them.
To meet the...
As maximum extent possible, so...
Or perhaps to be, we'd be specific about meeting the, meeting the impervious max.
Okay.
One of the codes that's not in our packet comes from Chapter 12 regarding nonconformities, and it says that buildings that are nonconforming, if more than 50% is damaged or destroyed, any reconstruction needs to be done 100% according to code. Which, this would not be, because it would exceed the 800 square feet if it were approved by the Board of Trustees. So that's just something to note for your considerations. Other questions for the petitioners?
No.
With your permission, I wouldn't mind adding some of my experience to the board's deliberations.
Please.
Every community is different, and I get that. We all, Illinois is a home rule state, every municipality gets to write their own rules and regulations. In 2010, Maywood, the Garden City of Chicago, adopted a new zoning regulation modeled on surrounding communities, imposing a 50% maximum impervious lot coverage limit and a 30% building coverage limit. Approximately 75% of the residential housing stock of Maywood is out of compliance. So in 2012, the zoning, the city council of Maywood, after receiving an appeal based on that issue, adopted an amendment to the code stating, property owners may replace existing nonconforming structures for maintenance purposes. For example, you have a rotted out deck or a rotted out garage that is falling apart and dangerous, as long as they're not making it any bigger, even though they may not have sufficient green space or it may be over the building coverage limit. So my point is this, if Maywood would permit a property owner to replace a garage in this situ, in this situation, shouldn't Riverside consider that also?
We do have language in our code regarding maintenance. Other questions? As, I don't see anybody in the audience, but if there are other objectors or interested parties that would like to comment? If not, then final comments, Mr. and Mrs. Blom?
Just to say that our goal is to restore our property to what it was when we purchased the home a few months ago. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to either continue or close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close, seeing as there's no other public comment.
I second the motion.
And I'll note that once we close the hearing, discussion will be limited to the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Aye.
Commissioner May.
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo.
Aye.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion for us to consider before we move on to the standards?
Um, I would make a motion to approve the variation request, subject to the condition that the paved area west of the garage is removed.
Second.
Commissioner Henigan, just to be more explicit, removed to meet or exceed the permeable restraints?
Um, I would not be comfortable with that, not knowing exactly what the percentages are for that area and how it would impact the total lot coverage.
I was just looking for something a little more explicit than remove the paved area west of the garage. I don't know if others are looking for something more explicit?
I think if we did, said something even less specific with regard to what gets removed, but under the condition that the impervious requirement is met. However that is, it could be, you know, impervious or pervious pavement in the driveway, it could be a pervious patio.
Okay. That seems reasonable, because...
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
So, Commissioner Henigan, sorry, would you amend your motion, please?
I would amend my motion to recommend approval of the variation, subject to compliance with the 50% coverage requirement.
And sorry, who seconded it?
I did. Oh. I guess, oh, Mr. Marhul did, sorry, Commissioner Marhul did, sorry.
All right, Commissioner Miller.
Okay, did you want some discussion before we move on to the standards, or are you ready to move on?
Um. Just, just to make sure I'm following procedurally here, because, because I, and I'll just say it upfront, my inclination is to, I would prefer to see a motion just to allow, allow these folks to, to replace the garage, to bring them back to the position they were in earlier, and not, at this point, enforce anything on them regarding the patio. So is that something that can grow up during discussion, or are we going to be, just some guidance, I guess, procedurally?
So, so are you seeking to to amend the motion that was made to remove the 50% consideration?
I'd be happy to do that, but I mean, I think, I think, I think it merits discussion, I don't...
Sure. Yeah, and that can be discussed. The other option is, you could, you know, note that that's your position for the record, and we include it in the findings as well.
Okay.
Either way.
Chairperson Mateo?
Yes. I did some quick, quick math, so 50% would be 5,625. 56% is 6,300, so we're talking about a difference of 675 feet of, of area, if that's helpful.
Thank you for that. Well, this is a straw poll from the commission. How many of you are in favor of having a condition on the recommendation that the pervious surface requirement be met? We can do a show of hands? Five. Okay, so the majority of commissioners are in favor, and as Attorney Morris noted, if when we, when we go to vote and keep, if we keep that amendment, when we go to vote, we can have a notation in the findings of fact that not all commissioners were in favor of that condition. Is that an accurate summary, Attorney Morris? Is that how you would go ahead?
Right, yeah, something, something similar that, that although one of the commissioners was voting possibly in favor of the motion, that he would have been fine with a motion that didn't require meeting the 50% as well.
And I would say...
So it's, so it's conveyed to the board.
Right, and in general circumstances, if there is a condition on a recommendation that could cause a commissioner to vote against that recommendation itself.
That's correct.
Even if they feel the standards are met otherwise. That was a good question, thank you, Commissioner Matthews. Other discussion, before we go through the standards? Okay. Well, the first one, because a particular physical or other unusual condition of specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of regulations were carried out. I can read some of those specifics, but what are your thoughts on hardship and particular difficulties in this case?
I think we can certainly argue that the snow load causing the garage to collapse on a new owner was certainly an unusual condition that removed what otherwise would be still standing.
Well, let me continue reading so that we, everybody hears all of it.
Sorry about that.
The presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or nonconforming, irregular or substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features, or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner, and that relate to or arises out of the lot or structures thereon rather than the personal situation of the current owner of the lot. Or number two, situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from reestablishing, restoring, or maintaining a material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or structure. The reason I read that is, you know, we all experienced a lot of snow this winter, and a lot of people suffered damage from it, so I'm not sure that that would constitute a particular hardship in this case.
I will completely agree with Chairperson Mateo that I was incorrect in my statement.
I will completely agree with Chairperson Mateo that I was incorrect in my statement. I would then fall back to number one, that this is peculiar to the subject property. And we are, the ordinance does prevent the owner from reestablishing the feature that was there already.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yeah, I mean, I think based on both my, my reading of the materials submitted and the statements from the property owners, um, the, the oversized garage, for lack of a better term, would seem to me to be a material feature of the lot. You know, they've said, they've said both written and orally that this was the major reason they, they purchased the house. So I think this does fall squarely under A2, because the, I think, I think there is a hardship here, a difficulty. And it's not just an inconvenience. If the strict letter of the law is carried out, preventing them from to its original form, they, they have lost a material feature of property and arguably a significant architectural feature, although I suppose we could debate that, but I don't even think we need to go to that level. I think the large garage is an interior feature of the property.
I would further offer that the existing foundation itself, the existing floor and foundation are an existing structure particular to the to the property. And in order to reuse it, they need to match the square footage.
I agree with all the reasoning that's been stated here. I think, yes, it's more that it's a particular hardship related to paragraph two, you know, the material feature of the structure that existed there. And yes, it was clear that this is not, this is more than an inconvenience for them to have lost their garage and needing, and need to create a new garage. And on top of that, they purchased the property, obviously for the very specific, one of the very specific reasons was to need that size of a garage. So I agree.
Commissioner Henigan or Commissioner May, anything else to add? Other thoughts? Just disagree?
I 100% agree. Absolutely agree.
Nothing to add? Okay. The second standard. The purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain. I think the opposite is true there. C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property.
Agreed.
Can't control the weather. If they could, we'd be talking. D, the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. I think there, we just don't know how many non-conforming garages are nearby.
Well, we also don't, sorry, Commissioner, Chairperson Mateo. I think we also don't know how many other oversized garages are potentially being crushed by snow.
And we don't know how many people in buying a property with an oversized garage really want that oversized garage, or they bought the property primarily for some other reason, like loving the house, and they're willing to live with the oversized garage.
My, my point was that agreeing with Commissioner Miller was that this is fairly unique.
E, the granting of variation would not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located.
I don't believe so, because the existing structure and potential future structure both fall within the, sorry, I lost my words, as I'm apt to do.
Setbacks?
Setbacks, thank you. All I could think of was offsets. Setbacks.
And has been there for at least 20 years, we understand?
Correct.
F, the granting of variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood? You don't think so? And then finally, G, the proposed variation will not impair inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create the drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood.
That's correct, and with the agreement of the owners to improve the impervious, or reduce the impervious coverage, that is actually helpful to where we want to go with our other zoning rules.
Any final discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is I agree with Commissioner Matthews. I don't remember exactly what motion was regarding impervious surface, and I wouldn't want to impose an unreasonable requirement that if taking out, for instance, that patio or replacing it, it doesn't look to me like that's going to reach like 560 square feet or whatever. Personally, I wouldn't want to then say that they must take out some part of the driveway, which looks like it's all required, or replace portions of it. So my inclination would be to limit the reduction of impervious surface to that pad next to the driveway, and no further than that on the property, and impose a requirement that they incur excessive costs to get 1% or 2% of additional impervious surface reduction.
And that seems reasonable. That's, that's about 240 square feet for that small section. But that gets you about halfway there. I would think that's, that seems like a reasonable suggestion.
Commissioner Pelletier, any thoughts on that?
So, before we go on, it sounds to me like Commissioner Miller is suggesting, or making
An amendment?
A proposed amendment to the amendment that is on the, or to the motion that's on the floor.
I think so, but I don't recall what the original motion said, how it was stated exactly.
Sure. Um, I, I wrote down recommend approval of the variation, subject to petitioner meeting the 50% impervious surface requirement. Is that similar to what you have, Courtney? Okay.
That was the amendment, yeah.
Right, so if we get a second to Commissioner Miller's motion, then we can talk about that and vote on her amendment to the main motion.
I was trying to get a lay of the land before going that far, but we'll follow rabbit's rules. So is there a second?
A second. It seems like a reasonable suggestion.
So I'll go back to Commissioner Pelletier. Do you have any particular thoughts on that? Now, not necessarily meeting 50, but only that portion of the paved area to the west of the garage.
Um, I would prefer that we maintain the requirement for a meeting the 50%. I mean, the variance is all, a variance for the total square footage is being granted. I, I think it's a reasonable request to bring the impervious surface to meet the code. And, and as Joel pointed out, impervious surface is an important item on all of our agendas and on the village's agenda.
Commissioner Marhul?
Uh, Commissioner Pelletier is correct. I like both ideas. Um, I think there is a reasonable way to get the extra. Sorry, I'm looking at the plan rather than looking at you guys. There is a reasonable way to get the extra impervious removed without defeating the purpose of the driveway. And the owners seem amenable.
So Attorney Mars, can we separate these two votes, one on the standards and the recommendation to the board, and one on conditions?
Absolutely. Well, I, I mean, it's a little difficult to vote on it. I, I mean, I think some people, yeah, some people are not going to find the standards met unless the condition is applied to it.
Yeah.
Is a variance for impervious surface not required? Are there two different variances here?
That's a good question. Why is there not requirement to meet the 50%?
I think because despite the collapse of the garage, the impervious surface already exists.
It's a pre-existing condition.
Right.
There, the, the owners are not asking to build more impervious. We are asking to remove, we are asking as a condition of approving the, the garage that wants to, they would like to build, we are adding a condition to it. Is that the correct way to look at that, Attorney Mars?
Yep.
I guess if it's helpful, if I may, Chairperson Mateo, for example, they could leave the foundation and be, you know, if they had no garage, even though they're not conforming, because that's how it is now, that could stay just another slab of concrete out there.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yeah, so just, I'll try to keep this short and focused. So I am just, I the, the reason I, I, I do not want the, or I would be against the impervious surface amendment, for lack, again, for lack of a better term, to this, is because I think it's really, um, I, I'm just very uncomfortable with the scenario where it's essentially the, these people's garage was destroyed by an act of God, you know, an act of nature. And then they, they came to us to request a variation to replace the garage. Plans, which lists a, in addition to the lar- large garage, it also notes the, the front porch encroaches into the required side yard. The driveway encroaches into a one-foot setback. They have a shared approach with 207 Scotswood. So there's actually, you know, there's a number of non-complying features of this property that, that we're not addressing, and I, and I don't think we should. Um, so I, I really, I, I'm very uncomfortable addressing the impervious surfaces issue. The, the owners have said they don't mind doing it, so I don't want to speak for them. I mean, if, if they decide, you know what, you know, you know, if, if they don't care, I guess, I, I don't really care, but I'm just, I'm just more concerned that this seems like a little bit of a reach when, you know, they're coming to us with a request for this one specific variation, and then we're going and saying, oh, you know, by the way, you know, let's see if we can make kind of an end run around this. And I, I understand the, you know, we want more impervious surfaces, and that's a good thing. I'm all in favor of it. I, realistically, I don't believe that the car here is going to make a significant difference to anyone, or to, to our environment by reducing this impervious surface by this much. So that's why I would, I would really prefer just to support a approval of variation, and then that would be it. So, so I'm going to support the variation no matter what, and there you go. I've stunned you into silence.
Any comments?
Is it possible to move forward with a note on, with each commissioner on their opinion regarding the impervious? Or is that unreasonable? Or unnecessary? I suppose the board has this recording and knows our thoughts.
Right, so, so are you suggesting the vote would just be on the variation request itself, and then the various positions of the commissioners be included in the findings for the board's information?
I'd actually prefer that the amendment as proposed be included, that what we vote on.
Okay. E- either way, the findings can reflect the, the individual positions of the, of the commissioners.
Correct.
Then I should go on the record. My opinion is, we should, as a commission, be, now, I as a commissioner, want to be consistent across the different organizations and residents that we interact with, and be consistent in requesting that every attempt to be made to meet that 50% requirement. And I will continue to do that tonight. But that still leaves us in the minority in terms of reaching 50%. The majority, oh no, we have one commissioner who doesn't want any requirement, three commissioners who want west of the garage, and three commissioners who at least have at one point requested meeting the 50% requirement. So, as chair, I'm not quite sure where to go with that.
Well, so, so we didn't get a second to Commissioner Miller's proposed amendment, correct?
We did.
So we should take a vote on that. If there's not a majority in favor of that, then we move back to the main motion. Um, if there is a majority in favor of Commissioner Miller's amendment, then that becomes the main motion.
All right, then let's take the roll call, please. So we're voting on whether.
To amend the main motion to recommend approval of the variation subject to removal of the, to, to change the main motion from recommending approval of variation, subject to petitioner meeting the 50% impervious surface requirement, to instead be recommending approval of the variation, subject to petitioner removing the paved area immediately, is it west or east?
West.
West of the garage? Correct?
Yes.
So yes, I have that Commissioner Miller made the motion, Commissioner May seconded it, so that would be the the roll call vote I could ask for now?
Yes, please.
All right, and I'm just keeping my notes in order. Just a second. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
No.
Okay, so the motion has been amended. And now, having gone through the standards, we need a roll call vote on the main motion, which is now recommending approval of the variation, subject to petitioner removing the paved area west of the garage.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?
Yes, of course.
Nice. I, can I change my vote? I was not paying attention.
You, you voted mistakenly, yes.
Correct. So.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
You surprised me.
I forgot what I was voting on.
And now we are voting on all the standards and the recommendation to the board, subject to the condition of removing the paved area to the west of the garage, as we had just, the, the majority voted for.
Correct.
Please call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye, but I just wanted, and Mr. Mars can tell me where this should go, just to note my, um, the fact that I believe that this, I, I'm, I'm voting aye, so these people can get their garage back the way it was. I am against the the second part, the surfaces, so, but I still vote, I still vote aye, understanding that that's included. I just want to note that.
Understood. The findings will serve reflect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pelletier?
I vote aye, and also would like to note my exception to the amendment.
And just for my clarity, yours is different than Commissioner Matthews. It relates to the 50% impervious maximum? And just for my clarity, yours is different than Commissioner Matthews. It relates to the fifty percent impervious maximum.
Correct.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
I'm aye, and ditto with Commissioner Pilleter in my reasoning.
So, that passes. We are recommending body. It next goes to the Board of Trustees, probably not their next meeting, which is May sixth. But maybe the one after that, uh, May twentieth. I I don't know when exactly it will. Um, but you can stay in touch with Ms. Kashima, and she will let you know when it does go to the Board of Trustees. So, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight, appreciate it. No more snow. That was a tough one. All right. We have no old business. Moving on to new business, we have a consideration and action on a request to use an alternative building material in the B one Business District at three forty-seven East Burlington. Thanks for sticking with us, Mr. Wright. Ms. Kashima, you have this one?
Do, um, Village Attorney Mars is helping me getting Rick Dan Dan for this portion of the meeting, but we don't have our smoke and mirrors ready, so, um, but he's going to ask Rick Dan Dan to join the conversation. Yes, so you may have seen in your packet. This is a little bit different, so I don't know how much this comes up for you guys, but you are authorized in the village code to hear certain requests, and this is one of them. So in the zoning code, there are certain building materials that are permitted, and there are others that are strictly prohibited. And that leaves some that aren't very clear, I think especially as technology evolves and different materials are created. So tonight, we're looking for a vote on the proposed materials. The applicant is, or representative of the applicant is here to discuss. I think particularly how this is different than a material on the prohibited list that may sound similar, but I expect that the representative for the applicant will will further explain that. And you guys are the final final word on this matter, unlike other ones where you make a recommendation to the village board.
And this is indeed the first time since I've been on the commission since twenty fourteen, I believe, that this is, something like this has come to us. So we don't have standards like we do for special uses or variations, but we should be able to use our our knowledge to the best that we can. Commissioner Pilleter, when you were on the zoning board of appeal, maybe you saw something like this back in the day. But this is, this is new for the majority of us.
I have not seen this before. This is the first.
Well, let's have at it then.
I am in touch with the villages consultant, and he will be joining the call momentarily.
Thank you.
Attorney Mars, could you give us a little background on the consultant? Expertise.
So Rick Dan Dan is with Lake Shore, which handles all of the building side of the villages. Like the building reviews and building permits.
Right, so so the villages longtime, uh, you know, code enforcement officer retired. And and then Sonia left, as you know, so you you know, there's kind of a reorganization and and different temporary staff helping out. And Rick is one of those people who is doing inspections and and providing services to the village. And I see Rick on the line now.
Hi, Rick. Chairperson Mateo, I'm not sure, um, maybe if per the typical order, we would want to hear from the representative first. I think either way, Rick Rick could either add to what I shared with the commission or we could start there at your discretion.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Wright first. Please, he's been waiting so patiently.
Okay, so the Masiros will not be joining us tonight. But this building is the Masiro's primary residence, and as well as it has commercial space in the front of the building, which are his doctor's offices. The doctor's offices used to be Dr. Masiro's place of business. Now it's his son-in-law's place of business. They did a major renovation in nineteen eighty-four, and in the process of that, they converted this building. It's a very unique building. Some of you may have even been in there, but they did like a craftsman facade on the front and on the back of the building. And a lot of those details that are done on the front of the building are carried out throughout the whole interior. It's a very unique interior space, too, that has exposed Botross rough in there. And like I say, many of those details are carried out throughout the entire space. The clients are really looking to just put it back to its original, well, the condition that they created there. Apparently, when they did that, this was not a prohibited material, and I don't think it really falls cleanly into the prohibited material now. Um, but I guess that's up for you to decide at this point. But they're just looking to restore it exactly as it is now, just with better materials to look exactly as it does now.
So as we all saw in the packet, you submitted the permit request, and Mr. Dan Dan reviewed it. And it was denied and then sent, suggested to be sent to Planning and Zoning Commission for review, correct?
Correct.
And so I asked Mr. Dan Dan to be here with us tonight, just to give us the perspective from his end of the review process to understand why this material was singled out as being perhaps not appropriate or to require additional review by the commission. Granted, it's not something that we see a lot of in Riverside, so it does perhaps merit a discussion on our part tonight.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry. Okay, so yeah, so basically, when I reviewed it, I, uh, you know, I typically go through the zoning code, and when I saw the materials that were being proposed, I saw that it didn't fall under. It's the, not necessarily that. I guess it's all how you look at it. Obviously, we go off and I read what a permitted material is. So if it's not a permitted material like this isn't, for say, I just mark it up and I relay the applicable code section to them. Um, I tried to add like a little bit of tidbit, I don't know if you guys have the review letter with you, to try to help the contractor and the owner see that there, you know, is an option for the planning commission to decide. Because ultimately, I'm not the designated zoning administrator, so I'm just doing the review and relaying that information. Uh, the only thing that would be close to being prohibited, which, uh, Mr. Wright let me know, it it's it's not the type of plywood. You know, I was just relaying that to him, because I don't know if the board or whoever put this section in the code, and I don't know if the intent was to completely keep wood off of like facades in commercial districts. So, um, I kind of added that tidbit onto the review letter that he could see that there might be an option for him to bring it here and discuss it for further, you know, I like to give people a solution as well, or try to find a path to compliance. So that's kind of where I left it, and then me and Jessica had some emails back and forth. I think Mr. Wright or one of his representatives had submitted some more information clarifying that. You know, what they were proposing was pretty standard, I think cedar and some exterior grade plywood. Is that right, Mr. Wright?
Yes, it's not the T one eleven product specifically, you know, excluded. It is an exterior grade plywood with, you know, a premium grade clear cedar that slats that are installed on edge vertically to create the same like screen wall look that is existing.
Gotcha. And I kind of just threw that in there so you could see it, you know, that T one eleven reference was just there, so. You know, when you came to the board, you were well-prepared, so so you could reiterate that it wasn't, you know, specifically that plywood, I mean, which is rare, I actually researched it myself. I don't know if I've ever seen T one eleven, I mean, you're a contractor, so I don't know how rare, it it seems like it's a not a common used material, really.
It's a very low-grade material that you would see used on like um, lower budget garages and so forth.
Okay.
Common material anymore.
So, yeah, so I then I delved into the zoning code, I have a lot of experience with zoning codes, and I tried to find, like, if there was anything of the non-conforming. Courtney, I don't know, but it seems like it 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 really didn't apply to this. This isn't necessarily, because most of the non-conforming stuff that I could find was, uh, about residential stuff, driveways, things like that. I didn't see anything for facades, for say, so I don't know if, um, you know, Mr. Wright has an avenue on that angle, you would know, I mean, I've only, I worked with the previous director for a while. So I would always do the basic zoning reviews, and then when it was something similar like this, we would kind of, you know, I would pass it off to the to the village, like I said, because I'm not the designated zoning administrator, so I can't, I kind of, I I get the zoning, but I'm not, you know, the end-all-be-all, so I I just kind of set it up for you guys. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Chairperson Mateo, if I may.
Please.
I, to put this in a, in a broader context, you know, in theory, the the Planning and Zoning Commission could consider, discuss, even recommend text amendments, I think it's something to think about in terms of is the code as written doing its job, and you might say the infrequency with which you see these requests, that perhaps it is. And that these cases are going to arise, where, you know, the special character of downtown, you know, means there's a very short list of permitted materials, that there's expressly prohibited materials. And then as cases come up, you know, this is the process and venue to deal with them. So those were just a couple of other things to consider that. If the commission chooses, we could have a broader conversation, but this is the matter at hand for tonight.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm curious myself. Has this come up beforehand, and are there other materials that have been considered and denied that just haven't come to us? So broader discussion perhaps would be in order as time goes on. Commissioners, what thoughts, questions do you have?
I can start. I think that the improvements that are being proposed are very different from the appearance of that T one eleven siding. I don't think there's a very close resemblance there. Especially since it seems like they're wanting to mimic the look of the existing building, which I happen to think is very attractive. So I would be in favor of the requested building materials.
I'd share Commissioner Henigan's thoughts. That building is rather unique, it's very interesting, it adds a little something to that streetscape uh, on Burlington, and it this is the look and feel question that I always question how far down we want to go, but what's being proposed is is a replacement of what's already out there, and what's already out there is certainly, I think, in keeping with a little more interest on that block of the village.
Commissioner Pilleter, I saw you nodding earlier.
I agree, the building is quite fantastic, actually. The back is even more interesting than the front. It does seem that, no matter what, we need to approve a material that's not on the list, right? Because none of those materials would be appropriate. Um, I do wonder what the existing backing is?
The existing backing was not the proper type of plywood, and it's surprisingly held up much longer than I would have thought. But the product that we're going to be using is something that is intended to be exposed and so forth, so.
Okay, so the existing backing is actually plywood. Of a lower grade.
That's correct.
And that has lasted since nineteen eighty-four.
Yep.
Reasonably well, and the slats currently are cedar, which is what you're also proposing?
Yes, the slats, I'm not exactly sure, it appears as though they are cedar. But they've been there for a long time as well, and just the, I think partially because it's not exposed to the sun, because the back of the building has held up much better than the front, which is odd, because the rear of the building is what gets all the sun. I think because it's never allowed to dry out and so forth, that's why the front of the building has decayed more rapidly than the rear.
So, um, I guess I would be interested, number one, in the opinions of some of our architectural commissioners. With regard to material, I guess I'm not that familiar with building materials. But it it seems to me reasonable what the request is.
I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in here. T one eleven siding, typically a twenty to twenty-five year building material. As long as it's painted, sealed, maintained well. It it's fine for the Midwest, it should last okay. Cedar siding, I've I've used that material many times in a couple of crate and barrel stores that I've done around the country. It holds up well in cold climates, hot climates. Cedar siding can be very attractive, so I, you know, whether or not you like the architectural style, there is precedent for it being used in high-end areas. Not necessarily in the vertical spacing that I've seen in the pictures, but obviously taste is subjective, so it's it's perfectly there is precedent to use it.
Just to be clear, the Masiros are not looking to use T one eleven, they would, Mr. Wright would be using this MDO plywood, this medium density.
Yes, the MDO with the slats that are, you know, clear cedar as the slats on top of that.
Okay.
Because T one eleven is prohibited according to our code. But the plywood he's proposing to use is not a prohibited item on our code, nor is the cedar.
Okay, so you're looking for something that's similar in character, but a little bit better, I see. Okay.
I put that down there, just so you guys know, I put the T eleven mark, just so he could see, you guys could see it, because that's the most, whenever I run into these issues or where we're trying to come up with a solution, that is the closest thing to what they were proposing. So I don't, you know, like I said, I I I had nothing to do with the writing of the code, so that's more, that was more there for reference. That's why it's just there at the bottom of the review sheet, because it's just letting you guys know that what they're proposing, the closest thing that's prohibited is that, you know, so that's why that was there as a note. It wasn't saying necessarily that it was the T one eleven, but if the intent of, which I know is difficult, because the code is older or whatnot, but I, but if the intent was to keep any kind of plywood or any kind of wood, you know, I I don't know, that's why that was there. It was mostly for reference for you guys, just to know that at the time, maybe that was the intent that they didn't want it. It's clear Mr. Wright reiterated to me that it's not that, I mean, ultimately, Sean, it sounds like you have some experience with these specific building materials. I don't, I I honestly couldn't tell you if it was painted and stained. I I don't know if I could tell the difference, you know, I don't know if you could, I don't know if there's a grain, a different kind of grain on it or uh, whatnot, and I think Mr. Wright is proposing vertical slats, right? So you would only really see with the shadow effect, because I actually drove past the building today, and I mean, uh, I'm not trying to to say anything, but I mean, it really has more of a shadow effect, I didn't really notice any of the grain or anything on the building, you know, it was more uh, just like a, you know, kind of like a modern type feature.
I I'd agree with Mr. Dan Dan, the the most distinctive feature of that facade is that is the vertical slating and the the plywood backing, as it were, or whatever is the appropriate term, is really there for the enclosing of the the end, the building envelope more than anything else. And a mounting service, surface for the verticals.
Correct.
Other commissioners?
No, I just, I agree with everything that's been said with with respect to this building, it's, you know, I'm, I would be fine with this. With allowing them to do this.
I think it's totally fine to approve this in this specific case, and I would think it is appropriate. it is appropriate for the Village to move forward with reconsidering the short list of allowed materials for the Business District, you know, at some point in the future, maybe consider that as a text amendment, to consider other materials, how those are limited, like, I don't, I'm sure you don't want to just say wood, I mean, how, you know, how that would be defined would be for people who know what they're talking about.
Ms. Kashima, in your experiences here and abroad, do you have any concerns with these materials, or any thoughts about them?
No, and I think the discussion here tonight, um, revealed trends we're seeing, right? I think the mixture of wood and stone, for example, um, that Commissioner May highlighted on, you know, national or high-end retailers, and I think there's pros and cons that we may consider as part of a text amendment, like it's a short list, the way to go, because of the special character of Riverside, and considering anything in between, um, via a process like this, or might we want to expand either the permitted or prohibited list? You could see that, again, as technology evolves and tastes and trends change, we might be doing it often, so I think that could be part of the conversation, but I don't see, I think it was important to contrast the T111 with what's actually being proposed. I think everyone can see there perhaps apples to oranges, and, um, very much in the, the purview of the, the Commission tonight to approve the requested material.
Okay, any final thoughts? Uh, we probably need a vote on this? Oh, go ahead.
I'll just give you one last thought, really, really, any material could be good or bad, depending on how it's, how it's being utilized, so, uh, you can take the lowest grade building materials and make a, a beautiful work of art out of them. Uh, if you look in Southern California, there's all sorts of examples of this, uh, things by Frank Gehry, things by, uh, uh, Eric Olin Moss, you know, they, they elevate just the most basic of building materials, so really, it, it all falls in line with just how is it being proposed to be used?
Craftsmanship.
Yes.
And we explored with the Maseos, a number of different options, a unbelievable amount of options of different materials to use there, to create the same look and effect, and they did not want to go with the low-end materials there, they wanted to go, they decided on a product that is costing them money, and I know that's not, not necessarily in the purview of what makes your decision here, but, um, they're not trying to get away cheap here, that is for sure.
Chairperson Mateo, to answer you, I think it's a, a simple motion to approve the proposed materials. All right, that's helpful.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed materials of the cedar strips backed by the MDO plywood.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, we do need a roll call, can't do all in favor, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul? Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Wonderful. Uh, do you have any information for us? Any update on RTA?
Did make a couple of notes. I think the two items would be the RTA TOD zoning project, we're expecting a draft from the consultant, um, any day now, and so staff would review that, and then we would reconvene the Steering Committee to review that. And then, um, did wanna let everyone know, I, I watched the video of your February 24th meeting, and, um, you know, how regarding the offices and the accessory use discussion, that will go to Village Board the second meeting in May, um, between some, some COVID out, outages and a new board, it did get a little bit delayed, but wanted to let you know that that's being moved forward, and so it will come, come back to you after going to Village Board on May 20th. So, our next meeting would be May 26th. Happy to answer any questions.
Could you remind me when the new Village Board gets inducted, sworn in?
May 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, thank you, Mr. Dan Dan, for coming to the meeting and discussing that.
No problem, if you guys need anything else, just let me know.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Take care.
Um, Ms. Kashima, do you know if we as yet have any, um, public hearings planned for May, or is right now the agenda wide open?
Wide open.
Okay, so we may have a meeting, we might not have a meeting, but please pencil that into your calendar, I'm sure it already is. But for now, thanks, everyone, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Attorney Mars, do you want to do your, did you hear and understand everything? Query? Or do you want to skip it?
We're, we're fine, I assume someone would have spoke up if there was an issue.
Okay, um, please call the roll to adjourn the hearing, the meeting.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
She's on mute, but she did say something, so we'll assume it was an aye.
It was an aye.
Uh, Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, I appreciate it. And I hope to see everybody in May, stay healthy.